This meeting is being recorded.
I don't know if you can hear me, but we just lost you.
Michael, um, I think that they're experiencing some technical difficulties. Can you see me?
I can see you.
Hi.
I like your glasses.
And here.
Yes. Correct.
When?
Hi Tiffany.
I don't want to be left out. I thought it'd say hey.
Oh, thank you.
I love that picture.
I used it. I was looking for a picture of the parking lot. It's the district office parking lot. That's like, oops, it's reversed. That's my car.
I know. Your car even made it in the picture. That's great.
Was that after bargaining?
Yeah, remember when we had that really bright rainbow? It's a double rainbow. You can't really see it, but you can kind of see the...
Awesome.
I was like, it would be awesome if I had a picture of the boardroom. We're like, yeah, but I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry Nancy, my, Michael, we're not, like, I'm not there. I'm like, I'm on day six of COVID, so I'm after five years, but, uh, or five years, oh my gosh, five days, but it was a long day today, so.
Oh man, I'm sorry to hear that.
I know, I went two years hoping it.
Yeah.
I thought I was gonna celebrate, have a great, not getting.
I can claim I'm the one, the one who finally broke through.
It's your fault. I thought for sure that's what I had until I went to the doctor and had a, some stuff done.
Oh, I'm sorry you're sick.
Yeah, I'm, yep.
You guys, can you hear us all right? Sorry for that.
Yeah.
Mishap. I have that built into my computer to say go home at 6:00 PM. I forgot to turn it off. I don't know why that happened.
That's a good idea though. Set a limiter on your laptop.
Okay, we are now starting the meeting again. Thank you all for attending. The first order of business is election of officers. And as I said at the last meeting, I'm gonna just do a quick recap. That, the way it works is that everyone will have a chance to nominate someone. If there's multiple nominations, each person will vote for one person. I will ask the nominate, the people nominated if they actually want to accept it, because we don't want to make someone take a position they don't want. And then we will vote. Then whoever gets the chair spot can run the meeting. However, if you're virtual and feel like that's not the best option, you can assign someone to run the meeting. And either that person can run it for the rest of the day, or you can ask that person the vice chair once we elect the vice chair. So, sorry about all that. I just wanted to clarify that since we have, excuse me, two members virtual. So, um, any questions before I open up nominations? Okay. I opened up nominations. Don't jump at one.
Just to clarify, you're opening up nominations for chair?
Chair. So I will go first then. I nominate Michael as chair.
Do we have a second?
You don't have a second. I'm okay. I wrote that down in my notes, but I forgot to say, you don't have a second? I have to leave it open for a second. If I hear none, no more, any more nominations, then I will, um, which I'm not. Okay, so now we will take it to a vote.
Do you want to ask?
Oh, yes. Michael being on chair, I know.
He's not gonna give me the option. Well Dawn, I, um, I'm humbled by the nomination, especially from you, and I, I will accept. Thank you.
Thank you for accepting. Okay, now I will take it to a vote. Thank you Sarah. Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. I vote yes. You are now the new chair. Get well.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity and, um, look forward to serving in this new role.
Nancy. Oh, she, I think she's clapping. Is that a clapping high five? Okay, perfect.
That's a clap.
Michael, would you like to take over the meeting now at your chair?
I actually, without objection, I would suggest that Dawn, we just, um, allow you to run this meeting.
Okay.
And, and if whomever is elected vice chair, if they're cool with that too, I, that's my suggestion if you're all, all are okay with it.
I'm seeing, oh yeah, I'm seeing no objections, so.
Okay, great.
So thank you, Michael. Congratulations, and I will pretend I'm still chair for a minute.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. So next is vice chair. Is there any nominations for vice chair?
I would like to make a nomination.
Yes.
Sarah Crawford, vice chair.
Wow, Rick, thank you.
Any other nominations? And I will offer to ask you.
I want to nominate Dawn as vice chair. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Do you, do you want to accept vice chair?
Um, I actually think that, um, you and Michael as a team, um, would be great, um, for this time of transition. But what, um, last, um, a year ago, um, when we did, um, student representative, we gave the training of the, um, school board to the vice chair responsibilities. And that is something that I would really be interested in doing, so I don't know how everyone feels about, if I accept a vice chair, it would be to fill, to be able to do that responsibility. So I don't know how anyone feels about splintering that off, or you know how you feel about that, because that would be really...
No, no, it was just something the board agreed on during the work, one of our work sessions that the vice chair would just be the liaison. But the board can appoint whoever they want.
We just, we added that as kind of a role, and so, um, of the vice chair responsibilities, that's really the only one that I would like. So if, um, so if that splintered off and became someone else's on the board, you know, not even, um, mine necessarily. But I just wanted to throw that out there before I made my decision about.
I'm confused.
So, at our work session that we did, like, I can't remember, I think it was a, almost a year ago, I think we did it last July or August. It was here, we had training, board training. It was like a board, it was like.
No, it was in a school board meeting when we were, oh, we were talking about training, training the, because we put Michael right on the spot as vice chair to, facilitate the school board, uh, the student reps to help, um, kind of get them up to speed and act like as a liaison and, you know, help train them or just be able to have them ask questions or go over the packet, kind of like Denise does for new board members. They have a school board member work with the student reps on understanding the process and be able to ask, of course, they can ask questions to anyone, but have kind of one point person to ask questions and feedback.
And maybe help set up, um, working with the new principal and the media art, media, whatever that position is. Because we talked about having, um, more word out and that PH TV would be better, so that would, that person would be kind of a connection versus, you know.
So that would be some of the duties.
Of the vice chair.
So she would say yes.
She would say yes, because she wants those duties, but if she can have those duties without vice chair, she would like that as well.
I would think, sorry. Um, you know, we could, we could even turn, uh, student rep liaison into a committee, and it could be a committee of one even. So that's totally something we could do. By the way, I think Sarah would have done a lot better job than me in that role of student rep liaison last year anyway, so. Um, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about, um, with having the legislative policy committee responsibility to taking on additional, um, leadership role with my full-time job and, and, um, so that's, but I would like to step up into another responsibility, so. Anyway, so, and I, I know we're not, this isn't necessarily spaced for this, but I feel like for a transition type, having Dawn and Michael together in these swap roles is really a good, better, good choice. So, I, thank you, Rick. So I'll say no, and then we can address the other issue as it, as it comes along.
So Dawn, do you want this duty? I won't let, maybe you ask yourself.
I gladly support Sarah if she would have said yes, but I will gladly take it as well. It's, I'm getting some stuff off my plate and it's, the vice chair role is like, I want to say cake, but it's a little bit, it'll take some off my plate, so that is good.
That's a yes.
Yes.
You're not allowed to quit a bunch of other things he says as vice chair.
Right, right, no, no, I will not.
You rock fast.
So, okay, yes, I will accept it. So there's only one nomination on the table currently, uh, anything, any other ones? Do they want to make a nomination? Nancy or Michael, do you want to take a nick, um, nomination? I think Nancy was just fixing her computer. Okay, so.
Ready to vote?
Yep, we're sending it right now. Ready to vote for me to be vice chair, Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Definitely.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. Thank you guys very, very much. I appreciate the confidence. So moving on to accentuate the positive.
I have positives in my superintendent report, but I don't know if anybody else.
Does anybody have positives online? Then citizens comments, and I am not seeing any citizens comments. Superintendent report.
Thank you, madam vice chair. Just, uh, this week we started summer school. Um, it's, it's not quite as robust as last year. But we do have some amazing programming with, uh, Calumaker City being a big partner of ours as well. Uh, we had a couple few transportation mishaps, but those got ironed out today, um, and it's off and running. So really thankful to, um, Maria Lee, uh, Blanc Leus, uh, Bressard, and, uh, those, the staff members that were willing to step up and, and, and hold summer school for those kids. Families really appreciate that. I also want to share last week, I think it was last week, um, we, or maybe two weeks ago, we had our administrative retreat at the annual COSA conference, and all of our new team members were able to, uh, make it to that, time together to really plan for the next school year. I can't imagine actually having that meeting in August with so many things that we need to talk about. So it was, we packed a lot into those two days, um, and we got to know our new staff members as well. Uh, we're bringing on some bright, capable, amazing people, so I'm really excited about, um, you know, the team we're bringing on and, and be happy to support them as they transition into their new roles. Finally, I just, uh, we had our COSA retreat, uh, COSA conference after that, and one of the highlights for me was I ended a cohort of superintendents. And it was actually white superintendents that COSA put together a class for, uh, white superintendents supporting equity work. And led by Matt Utterback and, uh, Jocelyn McGay, and this was our final kind of workshop. I think we're gonna move into year two because there's so much to this, um, but just was really appreciated COSA realizing, uh, the, how vital this work is in supporting superintendents as they move into, um, supporting all kids and all families. So that was great. And then COSA conference, that annual conference is getting better and better with some work sessions that, uh, we can learn and grow from. I really think our district probably should be presenting at COSA, OSBA, some other, um, events as well, because as we go to those, some of it's validating on some of the things we're doing, um, and some of it makes you realize that we have a lot to share as well. So, uh, that's gonna be one of our goals is to get some presentations, uh, to feature COSA events and OSBA and other events, um, that we can share what's going on in these town schools. And that's all I have.
I have a couple questions.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I was doing the high, really high math over here, but three out of our five principals are new. And, um, I'm wondering how we can find out how, as a board, we can best support them in this transition that they're making? Or I don't know if you could ask them when they come online, but, um, I would love to know what we can do to help support them in what they're doing. Um, and then also, we're providing meals for the community, right? Is that here at Phoenix Elementary? Do you know anything about how that hat's going, or is there a big attendance?
All of, I think it just started. It's all of our elementaries, um, and, uh, we can get some data and we can email it out.
Because I know last summer that was a big, really big thing that we did, but I don't, I wondered about what the, what it was like this year.
And I could certainly ask, uh, our new principals what kind of support.
And a lot of vice principals too.
Yeah.
I don't know how many of those.
So.
Yeah.
But belief and support I think will be big, and, uh, we also are utilizing some funding and some support that Jess Hamlin's leading about some administrative mentorship that we really haven't done a lot of in this district, but it's, uh, bringing five new administrators on. I think it'll be very important, uh, to do that, so it's not, um, you know, just our district office staff and there's, there's other expertise out there.
Thank you.
Do better.
Any other questions for Brent? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I was told I have to read the entire consent agenda, so please bear with me.
I don't? Oh, thank goodness, thank you Denise.
I can remember that was less than you do not.
Okay, so there's the consent agenda. Do I, I believe we've read it in the past.
It is modified, just with the, um, actual tidings no longer in there because they're no longer, uh,
One of these days, the date's gonna change this, because the fax one and some of these other ones are so outdated that it just seems kind of not caught up. Okay, do I have any, um, a motion for the consent agenda?
I have, I'll move.
Okay.
I approve the consent agenda, because as amended.
Sounds good.
As presented.
Alright.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Rick, thank you, Polly. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. We'll move on to action item, resolution 22-5 superintendent signing authority for change orders.
I move the board approve resolution 22-5 granting superintendent Barry assigning authority for executing change orders related to outstanding district bond-related construction projects as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Polly. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? Hearing none, I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
I vote yes, resolution passes. Next on is resolution 22-6 designation of LCRB for 2223.
We're looking for fingers.
That's okay.
I'll do it.
Okay. I move the board approve resolution 22-6, authorizing the board of directors to act as capacity in its own local contract review board for the Phoenix Town School District as presented.
Sure.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Rick. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
I vote yes, resolution passes, a little bit delayed. Next up, resolution 22-7, I mean, dash seven, free reduced lunch.
Alright, I'll make the most.
Okay.
I approve the board approve resolution 22-7, declaring that, excuse me, declaring that use of, disclosure of free and reduced and that will be lunch information as confidential according to the National School Lunch Act or Child Nutrition Act as presented.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rick, thank you, Polly. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Thank, I vote yes. Our resolution passes, thank you. Um, next resolution is resolution 22-8 real property purchases and capital X. Expenditures, yes, sorry. I got expenditures, thank you. Thank you.
I move, oh, were you gonna do a poll?
Nope.
I move the board approve resolution 22-8 approving the purchase of real property and our capital expenditures and authorizes the officers of the district to execute the purchase and finance agreements that may be necessary to carry out the transactions as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Polly. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
I vote yes, resolution passes. Next one is curriculum adoption for construction CTE grades nine through 12. Does Tiffany, did you want to speak on it, or did you tell us what we needed to last time?
Unless there are any other questions, we talked about it last time.
Any questions for Tiffany before I entertain a motion? Okay, anyone want to give a motion?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I move the board approve adoption of introduction to basic construction skills, Sabas Learning 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly, thank you. Sarah, any discussion?
I want to say that I sat in a workshop with David Ford, and he is a freaking rock star. And I am so grateful that we have him on our team at the high school. And what he's gone through in his life and the transition that he's doing, and the way he shows up to those students, I want to commend him for that, so. Yeah.
You're here.
Get to it.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we will take, we're gonna vote on this, right? I'm making your vote twice. Um, I'll take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Did it go second?
Yes, okay. I, I wrote that part down. I'm just making sure that I was on the right track. We are scheduled for a recess. Do we need one, or do we want to move on? There's not much left. Okay. Next up is facilities and bond update.
This is, uh, a busy time of year, uh, for our facilities, uh, doing a lot of work. We are, um, John has his crew, his paint crew, working in all of our buildings along with the, you know, kind of moving around the summer school, but, he just wanted to share that he appreciates board support, and, um, we're getting moving with the next fiscal year and doing a lot of projects. As far as bond, I think I mentioned it last time, that we did not receive the seismic, but we will proceed to, uh, give bids for Town Elementary School next summer, and then give one more shot at the seismic for middle school and plan on doing that the fi, uh, the following summer, which will round out our bond.
Perfect. Any questions? Moving on to the financial update.
I just want to commend the financial department wrapping up the last fiscal year. Uh, the last week is, um, extremely busy. It's, takes a lot of coordination, and they're wrapping up all the receipts and making sure that everything gets paid on, uh, the, the last fiscal year and on time. So, Yasmin and Charlene and, and the whole business department there, I just want to commend them. Uh, we should have a financial report, um, in our next meeting that will, uh, be pretty close to what we have for our final numbers for the year and the ending of balance.
How big is the business department? How many people?
We have Yasmin's overseas, and it kind of, we have, uh, people in a little bit different role, but Charlene is accounts payable. And she does, um, really that role, uh, to pay all of their bills and, uh, things of that nature. Debbie has a part of her role, Debbie Rogers, who's been here for years. Polly, Evelyn, who's been here, um, really, probably in the last year, has part of her role to do that. And then of course payroll with Amy.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to legislation, legislative OSBA updates. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I didn't, I, thank you for sending out the notes from the OSBA meeting.
You're welcome. I did not attend. They always have it on Father's Day weekend, and I'm always booked on Father's Day weekend. And they always make the calendar on that meeting, so I probably will not be attending the June meeting just because it's always on Father's Day weekend. And that's, you know, we all have our spouses that are nice until, you know, they have a, they have their breaking point. Mine is do not cancel Father's Day weekend, because we go to the lake. Um, but I do want to say that, that it's been kind of slowly, there hasn't been a much, much action, but the summer board conference, I'm not sure who's all going, um, if you have any questions about that, please feel free to ask. I'm going up tomorrow, and I believe Denise is going up tomorrow. And, um, we will be having a regional meeting with, um, the Southern Oregon Region Group. I was given a list of topics we can talk about, or we can just talk about whatever is on our mind, and we have an hour to do so, so.
Is that Sunday?
I think that's Saturday, so, at four o'clock, yeah.
Because I know there's different options.
Yeah, this one, you don't have an option. You can skip it, or even go.
With your feet.
Right, you can, you can fail, and some people do choose to leave, but I always feel like there's good information in there, so.
Can I just, uh, so did we get in the email, uh, hotel, I know you've made our hotel reservations. Did we have, did you email those?
You should have gotten, um, a confirmation directly from, uh, the river house.
Okay.
If you didn't, I have your confirmation number, so.
Okay, I'll look at my email tonight.
Okay.
I'll look at it here.
It's there, yeah.
Okay.
Or I'll find it in forward to get you.
Um, and then, yeah, let me know. So Saturday morning, right, is when everything starts? Is everyone going on Friday? Do we want to try to connect Friday evening-ish?
Do we want to try to connect Friday evening-ish? Or do we just want to all meet Saturday and have it be that? I don't know. I just, I would throw it out there, especially for board members who maybe haven't, I haven't, I've only been to the summer board conference once, and I don't really just bringing spouses or whatever, but I didn't know if Friday, I just thought I'd throw it out.
I think some people have plans on Friday, but Saturday might be a good option. We can call and see about going out to dinner. We do that at Nat, whatever, the regional or whatever, the November convention, whatever that one's called.
Yeah.
And so we could probably do that. If you have suggestions of where to eat. If not, we will look up and, and spouses usually can come too. So if you could, if you're coming and would like to go to dinner on Saturday, please let me or Denise or both of us and Denise, I'll help you, I'll help get reservations for this. I'm still pretending I'm board chair, Michael. And we will have, we will have something. So just let us know if you'd like to go to dinner and how many it would be.
Who is going? Can we just?
I'm here going.
Rick, are you going?
No.
No.
Nancy's going, Michael's going.
Yeah. Anybody but Rick and Rebecca.
Is any of the, is Tiffany and Jessica going?
Not all of them either.
Okay.
Is there a reception Friday evening?
I don't think there's anything Friday evening. So that's why, yeah, I didn't, I had to actually look.
You can pick up, you can literally, you can pick up your stuff by 4:00 p.m., I think.
Yeah.
There was something, I can't, if I see it, I'll email it out to everybody.
You can pick that up, your stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Well, maybe it was this brush.
It's just, yeah, this is the Saturday.
Okay. Because I know there was some stuff Friday, but it might be because I'm going Friday.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I forwarded that to you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Anything else on the summer OSBA or the summer?
I might just mention that AGMK is a big sponsor of this and David McKay is going to be there. I think they sponsored the lunch.
Yes.
On Saturday. So if you run into David or his staff, they were instrumental on, as you know, really program managing the bond and maximizing our resources. So a big thank you to them. And it'll be good to see David because we, Chris McKay was down there most of the time, but David on the forefront was down here all the time as well. So just wanted to share that.
And any other partners that I think I didn't list, but I think there are some other partners that were really helpful during the bond. So, okay, moving on to annual report on physical restraint and seclusion.
In your packet, and we're required to share this report with the board. We'll entertain any questions if you have any.
I just thought it was interesting.
We do train a number of staff members of each building each year for refreshers or newly certified with crisis prevention intervention. It helps make sure that you're the staff member and the student's safe.
Any questions on it? Thank you very much for that. Annual agenda items. Which was in your blue folders, I believe. And Denise put a lot, yes, thank you.
She worked hard on this.
She did. Any questions or comments on this? So this, I want to bring up the fact that I would love to have, and I've talked to Brent about it before too, about different programs like Project Use Plus and maybe some other types of groups that they give like a short program report. I don't know, has anyone here ever heard from Project Use Plus? It's fantastic, like amazing what they're doing.
You may hear from Miss College Dreams.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But Jen Perry would probably, I could, I know her, I could get her to come here. Pre-COVID, we had a lot of program reports, and they're so great. And I'm not sure how they were set up before, but I know that's something that this board really likes is program reports. So, yeah, I don't know. It seems like it's done either by ask or they come and say, we really want to share this with you. So we could set that up. I mean, we can talk about setting that up.
Also, there's the Maslow project, which I thought would be nice to hear from them. So I don't know how we, I don't know how we go to take action on that, but I would just want to bring it up because I feel like it'd be really great to hear from them.
It is on here under the monthly, just so you know. But yeah, probably once school starts again.
And I would say it would be something for the board chair and the superintendent to organize when they have their meetings for the agenda.
I think what will help is the board going on the road again and going to each school and really highlighting the programs at each school. I think we can certainly shoot for at least once a month to have a program report. And some of them are district-wide, like Maslow project is a district-wide program. So figuring that in order.
And I've always enjoyed like the ODP program.
Talent Maker City now become.
Talent Maker City, the band, oh my gosh, my favorite ones are when the band played. I still see a reminder on Facebook. We came, it was board appreciation, and the band played for us when we walked out of executive session. Oh my gosh, I felt like it was a queen. It was my favorite, one of my favorite board meetings. Like who doesn't want the band to be playing for you at the beginning of a meeting? Talk about setting the mood. It was like great, great getting in the meeting. So, yeah, I agree. I say the band.
Well, and now we have band at elementary levels.
Yeah, and we, we've had like computer robots. We've had some great program reports. So I agree. Anything, any other comments on the annual agenda items?
This has just continued to be tweaked. We've worked on this, right? The last year and right added and said this makes a little bit more sense here, right? ATI makes, is ATI?
They're in November.
Is that where it makes sense for them to be? Or didn't we move them with everyone else? Is that when everyone else, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's good for summer.
Because they were like May or something.
Right, I was trying to remember if that was the updated month or the previous. Just to wrap some on here.
Yeah, they are.
In September?
They're.
Oh, oh, appointed September, their first meeting.
Yep. And then do we vote on this at the next meeting? No, this is just for us to review. Just checking.
I mean, we can.
No, I don't want to make. You don't want to vote it, so.
Because then if we move anything, do we have to re-vote on it?
Yeah, so let's not do that. I was just clarifying if we have to vote. Any other discussion on this? Again, if something pops up in the middle like it has before, just feel free to say, hey, this doesn't make sense. We need to change it, so.
When is the board training or whatever we call it? Does that happen every year? You know, last time we had that, last year.
Oh, the work session. Oh, the work session. So remember?
I don't know what we call it.
So remember, we just voted on the board calendar. We took the months that didn't have two meetings, and we added like a meeting in there so we could use that time as like board development or work sessions so that it would be easier to schedule. And then it wasn't like.
When can we put this on the calendar?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And there's actually one for like next, like two weeks, right? And that's something that I'm not sure.
Yeah, whether, you do propose we add that, right? Or something like that.
Well, we'll put it on the calendar. So it is, sometimes it's nice to just digest summer conference or whatever it might be. Not that it needs to be a very long meeting or retreat, but it's up to the board on what they want to do rather than waiting till August 11th meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, because dawn's coming. I think it's nice to keep it on there, like, yeah, a debrief after the conference.
Yeah.
What did we learn, what, you know, certain things that, what we want to do, we'd like to implement and turn it off.
And there might be some things that come up that, haha, we could talk about this for 20 minutes or something. So I say leave it on if it's, since it's already on the calendar, we can leave it on, but let everybody else think. Okay, so board policy rewrite section H and section I. We got this information just recently, but we have, it's not going to be discussed until August. So if you have any questions or concerns, you can ask Brent or Denise. Go ahead.
It actually should be discussed now.
Now.
It's in the consent agenda.
I, no, but if you didn't have enough time and, and you're not comfortable, you can always ask. Just reminding you, it shouldn't be discussed now, but if you didn't get a chance, then you can always just ask it later. I personally did not have a chance to do the, the volume of.
I know, and I know.
Looking, and I, I failed. I had a lot of stuff on my plate. So thinking as myself, I may contact you later. I apologize for that.
And that's before August 11th, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And the way we'll do that is if one person asks it, we'll share with the whole board the question and kind of clarification. So that's worked out. If H is, well, H is being deleted.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Two out of H, do we just lose H? Is H, H is no more?
Yep.
Most districts don't have H.
Yeah.
And a reminder that we have policies, so.
And then I with instruction is, you know, there's, there's some detail there. So I suggest you have read through that and make the suggestions from Shaq.
I started, but I didn't get it.
Why did you say H deleted?
H deleted? What was H? I can't really.
There's two policies, negotiations, legal status, and school board negotiating power and duties.
Does that cover elsewhere?
I don't know why it's the legal reference for that.
You had a reason in your thing. What? Oh.
Well, and of course, I don't have the H in here.
HB.
There was OSBA approved, recommended for delete.
Yeah.
And I think probably because it is, I don't think you probably need a policy board or it's covered other places.
Isn't that part of our job?
Negotiations, legal status.
If we can get clarified, I mean, that's, we'll, we'll get to, I know we asked that. If you go on to other, these policies have been removed from other different policies and all that.
I mean, if you looked at policy HB, it's one sentence. It's just one sentence, and everything in there, we already do anyway. The board shall negotiate salary and other terms and conditions of employment with recognized employee bargaining units under the requirements of and subject to the limitations set forth. Is it something you all already do as a board?
We do it, but where does it say where we are to do it?
Well, I believe it went into another policy because this policy is from 1983. And I think that it never got deleted when we took in the new policy. If you do a search, which we could another time, I'm 99.9% sure it's in.
Legislation.
Yes, or the board, there's like a board policy thing. I'm pretty sure that probably closed sentence is in there. And the same with this other one was from 2010, not quite as old. But I think what happened was we had multiple policies and it wasn't. Because back, you know, back in the day, OSBA wasn't, I mean, they were great. But the policy, everyone's gotten better at keeping up with policies, and we're just catching up.
Okay.
I believe, but we can double check with them, and I will be seeing their policy people in a day or so.
I just think it's wonderful that you could remember the two it might be in. That's crazy.
Tiffany said it's policy BBA.
Thank you, Michael.
Oh.
What was that?
Thank you, Tiffany.
Oh, thank you, Tiffany.
Thing up there too. Oh, I'm not looking.
BBA.
BBA is a.
More BBA.
Yes.